I'd like to call the Graham County Special Call Meeting, June 28th, 2022, to order. And Mr. Moody, would you lead us in prayer please?
You're welcome. Very grateful just again to thank this time for giving us today. Thank you for your grace and your peace and your mercy, Lord. You've given us the believing, Lord. I just also want to thank you for our freedom we have in our mill turn, in our vendor's order. We thank you for them. I want to pledge your be with the best school one day as they make decisions, Lord, as they look at policy procedures or whatever to help to benefit a child. When we know a child, children are requested from your side, Lord, and we thank you for the opportunity that we'll partner with kids, Lord, and do what we do as a ministry to help them in every aspect of life. Again, thank you for all you've done for us, Lord. You're the best, December.
We'll do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. All right, I need a motion to approve the agenda for today. Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, I need a motion to approve the prior minutes, June 7th. Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? The floor is now open for public comment period. Do I have a motion to close public comment period? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, budget amendments. Mr. Green, you're first.
Okay, I'm giving you two packets of budget amendments. The top packet will be budget amendments that we have typically through the year, normal budget amendments. The packet, the second packet is year-end budget amendments, but I'll go over our typical ones first. These are budget amendments that may have increases or decreases in allotments to particular PRCs. First page there, these are budget amendments to the state public school fund. First section there is PRC 45. This is teacher bonuses. These are bonuses that we've had for several years. These are not bonuses that were a part of the legislation, the budget that was adopted back in November. And the teacher bonuses are performance bonuses. And this budget amendment, I always make this at the end of the year because we, until the end of the year, we don't know how much of those bonuses and matching benefits are going to be. So the total for these types of bonuses is $31,649.10. Next section down, this is PRC 9, longevity. Again, the longevity, this is longevity payments paid to the state fund. And we will not know until the end of the year how much these payments total up to, so that's why I'm doing this budget amendment at the end of the year. The longevity that's paid to our staff members for the year is $117,787.23.
Those aren't separate checks anymore, correct? Are they separate checks? Longevity checks?
Longevity checks, those checks are paper checks. Okay, they go to an individual who's earned longevity. Longevity, several...
Teacher ones, they were...
Right. Teachers, their longevity is incorporated into their salary now.
Now.
Right.
So who are these longevity here?
Those longevity payments would be for every one other than classroom teachers and principals, assistant principals, and instructional support. Okay. Okay, any more questions about the first two? Okay, next page, this is also a budget amendment to the state public school fund. This is PRC 141. These were employee bonuses that were part of the budget that the state adopted this year. This is a bonus that was to all permanent full-time employees regardless of their funding source. And if you had individuals whose salary was $75,000 or less, they got additional $500 over the base $1,000. Every individual, every full-time employee received a $1,000 bonus. And if your salary was $75,000 or less, you got an additional $500 on top of that. Now, the total for that particular bonus, system-wide, was $332,240.20. Again, that's funded by the state in full. Next page, these are budget amendments to the federal fund. First section there, this is PRC 003. This is SIR 3 bonus. This was the teacher and instructional support bonuses. It was $1,000 for each individual qualified. That was not fully funded during the year, but we did receive an additional $709 to help with that bonus. That's just a typical budget amendment during the year, just to bring our budget up to their allotment that they gave us. Next section down is PRC 82. This is IDEA, state improvement. The allotment that we received this year was $7,000. It was combined with carryover we had last year. This particular source of funding is specifically mostly targeted for workshop expense. Next section down is budget amendment for PRC 169. This is the gear for student health support. This was a very restrictive source of funding. It was targeted for psychological contract services, guidance counselors. It was very difficult for us to find someone in that position. We were able to expend a portion of the funds, but because of restrictions, the amount there that we weren't able to take advantage of was $40,873.20. And next section down, this is PRC 60. This is EC funding. If you look at the last section of that budget amendment, there at the revenue, we did receive additional funding of $10,619. But you can see there are other entries to this budget amendment. We were able to take some teacher assistance and reallocate their salary benefits to another source of funding. And we needed to present this budget to Department of Public Instruction. So by taking those teacher assistants out, it freed up some funds. We just simply put approximately $71,000 in supplies and materials. And what that, what we'll do is when we carry these funds over to next year, we'll realign that budget to the needs that we have, whether it be salary benefits, workshop expense, supply of materials, et cetera. Any questions about those budget amendments? Okay, next page, these are also budget amendments to the federal fund. First section there is PRC 110. This is 21st Century After-School Grant. During the year, we made expenditures for cafeteria staff to put together the snacks for after-school. And we didn't initially have any funding budgeted in that budget coming. So I simply realigned $8,000 to that out of contract and transportation and moved it into cafeteria staff salary benefits. Next two PRCs, these are PRC 171, SIR 2, and PRC 181, SIR 3. In April, we found out, and you're aware that in federal funds, we can request indirect cost reimbursement. Okay? For years, we've always had a restricted indirect cost reimbursement rate, and it's approximately 2%. We also have an unrestricted indirect cost rate that's 18%. So for some of these, particularly these two, we are allowed to budget for indirect cost reimbursement of 18%. So Ms. Knight and I got together and looked at those two particular budgets, two pots of funding. You'll see under PRC 171, you see in the bold there, just up in that, the revenue, we did receive somewhat of an increase in revenue of $2,833. But we had to reallocate from other line items, we had to take away from budgeted line items to move that indirect cost rate. And the total that we moved into indirect cost, unrestricted indirect cost for PRC 171 is $181,697.71. And the next section down there is PRC 181. That's SIR 3. It's the same process here. We were allowed to budget for that unrestricted indirect cost rate and realign the budget. The unrestricted indirect cost there is $202,130.82. Any question about those budget amendments?
Indirect cost being...
Indirect cost in federal funds, indirect cost, federal government allows us a reimbursement rate to administer these federal funds. Okay? We haven't requested federal reimbursements out of indirect costs for several years. The reason being is our restricted rate is so low, approximately 2%. We simply take that indirect cost and carry it over and use it, the same program the next year. It's to reimburse ourselves out of indirect costs is not significant enough. So we, we have chosen just to take that indirect cost and carry it over to the next year, use it in program.
So with this pot of money, that is unrestricted, what we're using is up to 18%. So we're allowed to rearrange that budget, and we took the line item so we could replace it other ways. If we've got grants to take care of it, if there's, we've got the capital needs money that comes to the state allotment. So we were able to pull that back in, and essentially that goes and backfills some of our deficits in our local... So the money that isn't able to pull from indirect costs here will backfill some of the gaps we had in funding for this fiscal year for the places.
And we can use them for local stuff?
Well, we're going to use it. I mean...
You'll see in a few minutes.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, yeah, we're filling the gap. I mean, that's how we're paying the bills.
Yeah, that's just...
It's not extra money.
No, okay.
It's, it's, it's going to be used for the deficits that we've had. I'm going to mention the fact that in May, when we requested that additional funding from the, from the county, you'll see, I'll have a document on the screen there, how these funds are, they're already...
Well, I'm sure they are. I was just...
We were just fortunate that we found out that we were going to be able to do that in April. We had a finance officer meeting for the region in Murphy, and that was one of the, some of the information that came out. And we were all really pleased to say that.
Yeah, it hardly ever happens. It may not happen again ever, but the one time that it does, we want to take advantage of it to be able to fill some of the gap.
Oh, I just didn't want it to look like that's money we've now got to spend.
Oh, no, no, it's already...
Our spend.
It's already gone, yeah.
Yeah, it just helps with current deficits we have. Now, the second packet of budget amendments that I have for you was called year-end budget amendments. If you will, if you will look on that first page there, under the code number, we have budget codes that are 19 digits. The second section there is a four-digit, it's called a purpose code. What we are required to do when we close our books, we can't have any deficits based on purpose code. We've already made all of our budget amendments that we've required to make. The state fund, individual funds are not in a deficit. You've got individual program reporting codes that might be for classroom teachers, it might be for principals, it might be 21st century. There are no deficits in those particular program reporting codes. But the state says we can't have any deficits in our budget based on that four-digit purpose code. So our budget expenditure, I may say this several times, our budget expenditures have to be greater than our actual expenditures based on this purpose code. And I'll pass out a report that will show you that we do not have any deficits based on purpose code after these budget amendments have been kicked in. Okay? So I'm not going to go over these line item by line item. It's just going to be by fund. And I'll give you a total now because really all this is doing is reallocating budgeted expenditures within a fund based on this purpose code so that we don't have any deficits, so that our actual expenditures are not greater than our budgeted expenditures. So in the state public school fund, there's a budget amendment here, and you can see those line items. I'm just reallocating budget expenditure, but the total is $79,805. And again, this does not change any of our actual revenues or actual expenditures. These types of budget amendments are going over now. Next page is the federal fund. This was, this was the simple one to take care of. This is PRC 163, the CARES Act. We only needed to reallocate $8,000 between two purpose codes to achieve that goal in the federal fund where we had no deficits, where our actual expenditures were greater than our budget expenditures based on purpose code. Next page, this is budget amendment for the child nutrition fund, and I'll go over this in more detail. As you can see there, this budget has been increased by $150,000, if I'm telling you. For years, we, our budget for child nutrition has always been a million dollars. Okay, and we've never even come close to our expenditures being at that level. This year, we know that the minimum wage for state employees is $13. So all of those employees in child nutrition are making a minimum of $13 per hour. We also have to take 24% of their gross wages and send that to our retirement system. And you know that fuel and food costs are increasing significantly. So our expenditures this year, including whatever payables we may have that come in within the next month, are going to be greater than a million dollars for the first time. Ms. Moody had mentioned to me that just a carton of cost now, and this may be a carton of bread, may be a carton of whatever food, is $2.25 the delivery fee per carton. Next year, that delivery fee is going up to $6 per carton. All right, now even though, even though we receive a premium reimbursement rate, it's called the summer feeding program, that's greater than our normal reimbursement rate. If that doesn't go up next year, this increase in the, in the delivery fee, the minimum wage is also going up to $15 an hour. We don't know what the retirement reimbursement rate is going to be yet.
Food costs themselves.
Food costs, fuel costs. Child nutrition, if that, if that reimbursement rate doesn't increase, we're going to be in trouble. It's going to be real, really difficult for child nutrition to break in.
And when they don't, then the locals have to pass the big up the deficit.
Well, but the thing they did, they went across the state.
Yeah, this is, this is going all across the state. So I just wanted to go over that budget amendment in a little more detail. I did increase it by $150,000.
For every carton, every time they do a carton of hamburger buns, it's been $2.25 or something. Now it's going to be $6 for that same...
Next year, it'll be more?
Each carton. She gets 10 cartons, and that's a $60 delivery fee just to bring the cartons through to the door. And where it's down, we have $20.
That's a $267 increase in one cost. Okay, next page, these are budget amendments to Fund 8. Again, these are year-end budget amendments. First section at the top combines two PRCs. It's number 472 and 819. These are where we record our entries for sales tax refunds. We actually did get sales tax refunds this year, I think, specifically approximately $46,000. It's two years' worth. We only need to budget, we've got the revenue, but we only need to budget $4,000 of that because $4,000 of those sales tax refunds have to be diverted back out to the individual schools and child nutrition. So this is a year-end budget amendment for sales tax refunds for $4,000. Next section down is PRC 308, Impact Aid. Again, this is a year-end budget amendment within Impact Aid, just simply moves around budget expenditures. I'm saying this again, so that your actual expenditures are not greater than your budget expenditure based on that four-digit purpose code. And the last section there is PRC 413. This is DC PruK. We reallocated $13,000 to achieve that same goal within that particular program of pruK. The next one. I'll go over this in some detail. Since our life recorder doesn't work on this screen, I have to...
I think we should bring us copies, we are paper copies as well.
Well, I'll show you the result after the budget amendments. Now, I'm sure that most of you over here can't see this, all right? My next budget amendment is Fund 2. We all know that we expend our state funds, we expend our federal funds, we expend Impact Aid and temporary seats. That's our major sources of funding. Now that our expenditures are greater than what those allotments are, there's only one other place to move our expenditures, and that is in Fund 2, local. Now, this number right here, this is just a purpose, this is this purpose code report, okay? It's totaled by these four-digit purpose codes. But if you can see down in the corner, that deficit, this is before I made the budget amendments, the deficit in Fund 2 was $624,000. Okay? The original budget is $1,600,000. That shows you how much our costs have gone up through all funds. And once we expend state, federal, Impact Aid, temporary seats, all those expenditures wind up in Fund 2. So we have to make a budget amendment so that those deficits do not show up in our budget. It doesn't increase any revenue, okay? Actual revenue, those expenditures are what they are. The revenues, actual revenues are what they are. But we have to, we have to revise our budget so that there are no deficits there. Fund 2 is local current expense fund. Yeah, the last page, the last page of this budget amendment is local current expense fund. So we know that before this budget amendment, that we have a deficit of $624,000. We have to change that. Okay, our budget can't show a deficit based on purpose code. So that's what this budget amendment achieves. If you will look down the credit column, the budget's been increased in local current expense fund by $780,000. That doesn't mean we're getting any more revenue, cover those losses. It just doesn't appear on our books that our budget, our budget expenditures are greater than our actual expenditure based on purpose code. On that entry there at $780,000, if you'll scan back over to the description of code, that says fund balance appropriated. We can't increase the budget for the revenue code for the county. Okay, they've, they've made their appropriations on a million dollars. That stays as it is. But we don't have any fund balance to appropriate. Okay? And we knew that, and that's why when we had our May board meeting, that we decided to ask the county for an additional $500,000. And I'm grateful that they, in their draft right now, that they got an increase in $263,000. But as you can see, we've already got a deficit of $624,000 in this year. So our budgets, our funds are going to be extremely difficult going forward. $263,000 a year. That's in their draft budget. Now, we have adopted that and added on. The increase is $263,000, but the total will be, will be a million, $263,000. That's in their draft, Mr. Gray, and I'm extremely grateful for that. Anyway, those are, those are the year-end budget amendments, and I'll pass out some reports here so that... This is this purpose report. And Mr. Allison, you get Fund 2. Now, if you'll look at that report, look at the far right column, far right column. This report's based on purpose code, and after these budget amendments, you will see that in that far right column, there are no negatives, there are no deficits. So these, these year-end budget amendments achieve the goal that, or the requirement by the state, that our budgeted expenditures are greater than our actual expenditure based on that four-digit purpose code. On this page, there's one other, there's one other point I'll make on this budget amendment, the top two line items. This is very significant. First two line items there, you've got a budget code that's got an object code that is number 56, okay? In the state fund, we have Transportation Department's PRC 56. The state gives us allotment, cover expenditures for yellow buses. No, 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 I'm back on the budget amendments now, that, that, the last page, local current expense fund. Sorry. It's under the code number, the first two line items. You see object code there. The, the third section is 056. The entries there, the first was $50,000 for transportation supplies, and the second was $55,000 for state gasoline and diesel. All right? Those are expenditures we had to make out of late for yellow school buses that the state is supposed to fund fully. In light of these mandated pay increases and also the cost of gas and fuel going up, we had to take $105,000 out of our local, local funds and pay for yellow bus expenditures. Now, why the state, why the state did not increase allotments across the state, a lot of those facts, I have no idea. I know that their allotments are based on three-year average, but this is pretty extreme. They need to change that. I just, that, 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 you know, that's the financial difficulty that every school system has across the state. For us, it's just $105,000. We don't know what these other school systems, what, what they're having to pay out of their local current expense fund for yellow bus expenditures. It's supposed to be fully funded by the state.
Who would you contact to say, listen, you're supposed to fully fund this? Is that, is that in the general statutes? Or somewhere, they're supposed to fully fund it?
It's an increase in the... I think they'll go back, they'll continue to use that three-year average. You know, for, for school systems, yellow bus expenditures, and stick to that. I don't know. Who do you contact, who do you contact, where you go with the ladder to change that? I'm not aware of who that might be.
So who you do in conjunction with the county commissioners are anticipating a meeting soon with their local, you know, state representatives? But we'll start later. I mean, you know, they, they need to see this line item by line item and understand that, that, you know, we, $105,000 for us, that's huge.
And, and that $105,000 is part of that $624,000 deficit.
If you don't have it, you don't have it. So what do you do?
I mean... We've got, there are no answers. I mean, we're lucky that we've got the cash to pay it.
But that's dwindling, and it's going to come to a point that you're...
It is.
You're going to want to get, you're going to have to cut services. Something's going to have to go.
Yeah, I mean, there's a possibility that we may have to help support child nutrition based on those increases and those costs. Transportation, if they don't increase their allotments for the school districts, then you're going to see that.
And that's still come out of local.
It'll come out of local. Another, and we've... Another, uh, and we've, we've had this discussion before about PRC nineteen within the state fund, that's the small school supplemental funding. That funding hasn't changed since basically two thousand and eight. So when that source of funding stays static for that long, it's one million eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But we pay, we, we pay salary and benefits out of that, and as these salary and benefits increase, and that allotment stays the same, then that money doesn't go far as it used to. We, we used to pay power bills, water bills out of that, and still have money left over to pay individuals out of that. But that was a discussion that we had with Kevin Corbin before the pandemic, and that got put on the back burner.
So I met Friday morning with Ashford at the leadership conference with the Small Schools Consortium representatives across the state, and we will be lobbying for an increase in that, but it won't happen in this budget because this budget's a viable budget, so it will have to be in the next budget, um, so that the lobbyists are working hard to get an increase in that and bringing that to the, the attention of the legislators.
Esther, what did that bring our fund balance down to, since we had to pay that hundred and something thousand dollars?
We're in a negative fund balance position.
And we can't be.
No, we can't. Because we, we had that, we had that discussion.
We shouldn't be.
We shouldn't be.
There's a reality.
Yeah, we, we had that discussion, you know, before we made the request to the county of the additional five hundred thousand, and, uh, you know, uh, even Ms. Davis said that you basically, on our books, we have no fund balance, okay?
But our account told us that.
Yes, he told us, he told us that when he presented the audit in January, um, and these, these costs are just not being covered by the state, which it is.
So it won't happen this, it won't happen this cycle?
Well, we suspected the budget would be similar to what we had this year. That's what you expected the second year.
How do we save our budget?
Uh, it was my understanding that it should be out this week. We thought it would be out by last Thursday, and so we're hopeful that it'll be out by the end of this week.
So we are probably going to get a budget this year?
We, we think so, but we thought so in the house.
But you know, when the state comes out with their budget, and they have these mandated pay increases, mandated, uh, matching benefits percentages, they may partially fund that within the state fund, but those, those requirements are across all funds, okay? The state's not going to pay for those increases in the federal fund, or local current expense fund, or child nutrition fund. So those funds just have to make up, they have to pay that, that's a mandate. So those allotments, uh, get spread thinner every time a, every time a state has a mandate like this for salary increases and matching benefits. Now, you know, I said initially in this budget, this was a very generous budget for staff members, you know, pay increases, you've got mandated bonuses, generous as I've ever seen them. I mean, it, it, it's not fully funded, um, and we're able to make up the difference.
It's kind of generous, in certain matters.
Kind of, yeah. I mean, on an individual basis, you know, staff members, some have made that better than others, which, you know, that's, you know, a discussion we can have, labors. The state's just not keeping up its end of the deal.
So, you know, a further stretch of the budget, this, you know, our minimum wage for the state unit was thirteen dollars this past year, it's now moving to fifteen, so that's a further stretch on the budget. Um, I also have a concern that they've not moved the whole salary scale, so you will have people that have worked for several years that will be making just a, a, a dollars an hour, maybe more, than people that can, for any people that can make fifteen dollars an hour. So a, as a, you know, as a school superintendent, it, it concerns me that they've not moved the whole scale. And then I look, I'm trying to look at retention of employees, and, and I just really feel like that's not the best way it should have been all been moved into payments.
But Ms. Knight has been that way for several years.
It has been, and, and, but it's just sad, because we're looking to try to justify, you know, hardworking people that work very hard in that salary range, that, um, that have to see somebody brand new coming in, making what, what they made last year.
But that's my understanding that the federal is going to increase, but they're probably not sending money for what we need for, but they're sending money for things that we didn't need, but not for what we really need to cover some of these expenses.
Yeah, there, there have been, uh, federal dollars that come with restrictions to help with the pandemic, um, but they're, 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 they're restricted, um, they're not allowed to make up deficits in other funds.
Can you make up deficits?
Tough financial terms. But those are my budget amendments, uh, to, uh, for typical budget amendments, and then also the year-end budget amendments as well.
I want to ask you something here. I, I will review this, this is Fund Aid, Fund Aid?
Yes. Fund Aid, uh, is our fund where we...
Is that, that's local?
It is local.
Okay, can you say something about Fund Two?
Fund Two is Local Current Expense Fund.
And can I put Fund Two on this page right here? Or can I put Fund Two, so I'm...
You don't have Fund Two.
I don't have Fund Two.
Mr. Allison has Fund Two. And I, I can give you that page if you'd like.
No, that's fine.
But Fund Aid is where we account for our individual grants. We've got grants in there like Dearup and, uh, School Rose Grant, and those, those grants are restricted for purpose. Impact Aid is in that fund, and Impact Aid, you know, is probably the largest source of funding. Like, that fund is eight hundred, possibly, uh, six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But all those funds are expended as well. I mean, you know, what we can't pay for is state, federal, Impact Aid, and timber receipts winds up in Fund Two, Local Current Expense Fund. That's it, that's Fund Two right there. Well, maybe I made a copy of just Fund Two.
I don't think you made your copy. You can give your copy.
No, my fingers are in. Federal grant fund.
That's Fund One, state.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Daddy, Mr. Turner?
That's my presentation.
Thank you very much. Somewhat depressing. Ms. Knight, personnel. Oh, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented by Mr. Green? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, now, personnel.
Mr. Prech, I'll bring you names of a elementary teacher, a custodian, and a summer custodian.
All right, you're, you're going to do, okay, Ms. Knight, uh, fiscal year twenty-three child nutrition bins.
In your packet, you will find a page that is from Denise Moody. It is requesting the following vendors for the upcoming twenty-two, twenty-three school year, uh, Coke, Coke Cola, for beverages, Valley River extinguisher service for the hood system cleaning, U.S. Foods for supplies and grocery, Mayfield for milk products, and Mayfield for ice cream. And, of course, she, she puts those out the bin, we're in a consortium, and this is the, her recommendations for this year.
So do we all make a sign?
No, we just wouldn't even vote. She just fixes this.
Do I have a motion to approve the, uh, the, uh, child nutrition bins, Coke for beverages, Valley Fire extinguisher service, U.S. Foods, Mayfield, and Mayfield for milk and ice cream? Do I have a motion to approve these? A motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, okay. Kristy Cable, she's not here, so you can do it.
She's actually in a IEP meeting this morning, so I grabbed this.
Prayer certification, federal program.
Yes, so, uh, every year since nineteen sixty-five, as a result of receiving federal funds, North Carolina has a prayer certification assurance that goes with each federal grant. Uh, this is an annual, um, certification and assurance, and just for those of you who don't have a copy of it, it, it reads as condition of receiving funds under this act, we hereby certify in writing to the state educational agency that no policy of the local educational agency prevents or otherwise denies participation in constitutionally protected prayer in public elementary and secondary schools. So that's just been, it's a standard assurance, and we've done it for many, many years, and it's just kind of really good, so it can go on federal programs, grants.
Do I have a motion to approve the North Carolina prayer certification and single set of assurances act? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Revised school calendar, Ms. Knight.
Yeah, we have a, a minor revision to the school calendar. You should have a revised school calendar in your, in your packet, um, just a, a couple revisions. We were, um, advised during the administrative conference last week that the remote days that we were asked to add into the, uh, calendar should, we had the flexibility to remove or rearrange, um, they probably, remote days just because the pandemic is ending and wherever we do that, we anticipated that was coming, but back in the blue February, when we asked you to look at the calendar, we did not have that authorization. I told you it might come. Um, so, uh, we're to that point. We do, uh, we are fine with leaving a couple of them in there, so there are some minor changes. Um, we would like to, uh, at least move one of those. So one change that was made, there was a remote day scheduled on, on September the sixteenth. We would like to just make that professional development day now.
So in other words, we're not, we're not, we don't have it listed as a remote day?
That's correct.
So remember that.
I mean, remote days are student days anyway, just depending, it was just a different in the presentation, so it doesn't change student instructional hours. So with the sixteenth now, will, will change, it will not be a student day, uh, it will be a change to a professional development day, and then, um, that's the only thing that changes there. Uh, in October, there had been a remote day scheduled for October thirteenth. Uh, we have moved that day until October eighteenth, and made that a professional development day as well. Part of this has to do with the, the expansive letters training that goes on at the elementary school, where they're having two years' worth of, um, professional development there, so it's to align with some training that they need to, to schedule. And then, uh, other than the removal of those other three, uh, the January twenty-fifth, February twenty-fourth, and March twenty-second, remote days, that's all the changes in the calendar.
Say that again?
We removed the rest of the remote days.
You just took them off?
Just took them off, and they're just going to be regular student days. They were going to be instructional days anyway. Um, I am understanding that they're, they will possibly look at us being able to use remote days if we have a snow day, and we can use that as a remote day, still have instruction if we're prepared for that to be a, a remote day, and then show number of devices, and we can use it that way. So, uh, that should be decided, hopefully, when all the, um, when all the legislation settles for this.
That will help us in school, if we need to.
Well, it should help us, uh, be able to keep this calendar intact and finish, um, by the twenty-sixth of May this year.
So we need to vote on it?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the Grand County Schools two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar? Mr. Green, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Ms. Wiggins, I do not like to see this word, but suicidal or self-destructive behavior.
Good morning. Um, so when I left you last month, uh, you had received a copy of our minor changes to the, um, policy that has been in place on our state schools manuals, probably, I would think, since about two thousand and five. Um, our mission was to take that policy and attempt to clean it up just minor, uh, make minor revisions, so that it reads more closely to your mental health policy. Um, so you should have had that for about a month now to look at and to review. Is it your pleasure that we go ahead and adopt what is stipulated in your actual new protocol?
I can say that Ms. Wiggins and her crew have worked very hard to align this policy in the practices that we do, and the, uh, the trainings that we're doing with staff and community engagement, they've worked very hard to make all this happen, so I would certainly endorse approving that.
Um, I wanted to call your attention to, um, just the line, when it reads the policy number zero one point one nine, um, in previous, um, times when this, um, policy existed, it was considered like a checklist, it was, uh, really primarily focusing on suicide and self-destructive behavior. We have added a language of perceived threat to others. There's a big push from the state right now to make sure that we have threat assessment teams, and so I added that as part of the top, but that really gives us good coverage for any type of behavior that might be problematic or concerning. Do you have any questions or anything that I could try to, um, better explain to you? The only other thing that I can think to draw your attention is at the bottom of the actual policy. We have, um, put a statement in there that if there is an, a, a media emergency on campus, that we will utilize our nine-one-one services.
That will what?
We will utilize our nine-one-one emergency services if that is of a perceived nature that it's so serious that we need attention there immediately. Otherwise, we will employ the use of our, um, mental health for our local crisis unit. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve, uh, the suicidal or self-destructive behavior action protocol as presented by Ms. Wiggins? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Board policies, uh, before I call on you, Ms. Davis, policy sixty-one forty, Ms. Brackett, would you talk to us about that?
Yes, sir. Um, last month at the board meeting, I spoke to you about, um, our student health advisory council revising the student health evaluation policy. Uh, so in your packet, you have there, first of all, the policy as it was, um, and when our team met last month, we worked on, uh, the appendix one section of that policy. Um, so in your packet, you'll also find a summary of the changes we made to that appendix. Um, so if you want to take some time to look over those changes, um, that we have made, they're mostly in the goals section that they're outlined there, um, what our team felt needed to be made, um, to the appendix. Um, mostly it's verbiage, but we did add some, um, updated goals, um, in the, the section that's called overall health wellness goals, I believe, um, that reflects our team's goals for the upcoming year. And we also added, um, the updated assessment tool to the Wellstat three point O from the Wellstat one point O, that was outdated information. Um, so if you want to take some time to review that, um, then you can approve it at the next board meeting, that'll be fine, give you some time to look it over, unless you're comfortable in approving it now.
My understanding is it's mostly technical changes.
Mostly, other than adding, um, those updated goals and revising the wellness, the wellness assessment tool. It's mostly verbiage.
What's the pleasure, the board? Do you want to vote on it now, or you want to wait till the next meeting?
Usually what you do is, this would be an emergency approval, and you still have it on the next board meeting for revisions, or you do an emergency approval when you already have, it's just in your procedure, and actually it's in your policy. You do an emergency approval today, but you still have it on your next board meeting to, to approval in case there are any changes.
Okay.
Sounds like it's not the main step, I guess.
If you want to approve it today, I think you need, sometimes you have to do emergency because school's coming, but if you want to put it on for second reading on your next board meeting, I'll clean this up and work with, make sure it's all revised and bring you a good copy.
Well, yeah, transferring this to...
Sir.
So if we could, we could then defer this for second reading, is that what you're saying?
Right.
From July? Well, we don't want to go to a regular August, August is the next regular scheduled board meeting, so.
Okay.
Is that, is that too far?
Is that too far?
Okay.
And then, okay. Perform it to the policy manual, and we can look at it.
Okay.
So we'll get... We're still on that bag, aren't we?
Fair enough, you don't have to act hard today. All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Davis, board policy, second reading?
Yes. You have from your, um, board meeting on June seventh, um, policy thirty-four thirty, school improvement plan. Policy forty-one ten, immunization, health requirements for school administration, for school admission. Forty-two sixty, student sex offender. Forty-three thirty-four, use of unmanned aircraft drones. And I didn't know if you didn't want to change that and adopt what, what we have with your superintendent approving any drone, um, on campus. We talked about. The way it is now, there's just, um, you have, you have to follow new federal laws. And it has to be less than fifty-five pounds, uh, for school use, and then, um, the policy allows for you to ban or prohibit all drones or either go through your superintendent to approve all the educational drone use.
I think you would make more sense going through the superintendent, considering we're beginning a drone problem.
Yes. Yes.
And we decided that there wouldn't be one more than seventy-five?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five. Has to be less than fifty-five. And that, they're just fed guidelines for, if you get above that, there's a whole plethora of laws.
And, and Mr. Wiggins has joined us today, uh, and I might have ensured he gets his work done straight at the meeting, and he's, he's here observing and, you know, working with Central Office of Summer Summer, but he also is, is drone certified. And so he can be helping us and guiding us.
They're good, so.
So we are going to go, we go forward with the program, right?
We're trying, aren't we?
We are trying.
We're starting in August, yes. With that, with regular.
That's, that, that'd be great. And then forty-four hundred attendance, and, um, this is second reading. And I will make sure, and I apologize, I didn't give the Rock Moody, um, before the twenty-eighth or the seventh. But, um, you have, there are some required changes that they're not an issue, attendance. It's always a tough category to regulate, but I will be sure to go over the policy again with Rock, um, before I draw the final.
And we have, we approved the.
You, Rock.
Well, but we, we, I, we had a question. There was a question somewhere in there, and I can't remember where it was, about.
Attendance?
Well, it was, uh, parent notes. And Bishop Madison had some sort of that also, we only use doctor notes.
Rock. While we, um, are going to report with. The requirements of attendance, um, as set forth in one fifteen C, we can regulate it with, um, not accepting student notice because you give enough days excused.
Oh, here it is. Excused absence is when a student must miss school or written excuse signed by parent or guardian must be presented to the, to the student teacher on the day the student returns after the absence. Mister, myself, as well as Mister Matson had a problem with that.
It does. That, we, we're gonna go by our own policy. We have an attendance policy that is amended, um, for student attendance here. What the state, um, board is requiring is all that we're adopting from here. We're keeping our own policy, but we have to, uh, we have to allow for valid educational, you go down to seven, excuse under C, you're on C, excused absences. We just go down to seven. We've got to adopt that one, participation in valid educational opportunity. So then they added a COVID, um, situation, um, to excused absences. We're gonna keep our policy that we have now, which addresses the notes, but we're gonna adopt in here what's required.
Okay, so.
And, and it's, notes are not required. Because you have an ultimate means of accounting the student's access.
It will be okay, I think.
Yes, and that's why I'm gonna check with, um, Rock Moody. Make sure that with our current policy, that we only take out here what are required changes.
I, I guess I'm. We're gonna keep the policy we have. And add a couple of things in that policy that's required for us to add, which is the educational field trips and the COVID related absences. Is that how?
Exactly.
So what's gonna be on our website?
Will be our current policy for special student names.
Not this, yes, thank you.
I know it is. Oh, thank you. Okay, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Davis. Do I have a motion to approve the second reading for policy thirty-four thirty, school improvement plan? Policy forty-one ten, immunization and health requirements for school admission? Policy forty-two sixty for student sex offender? Policy forty-three thirty-four for use of unmanned aircraft, drones, and policy forty-four hundred, attendance? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Is that it? Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
I've got a question.
Oh, okay.
So do we no longer vote on masks, for mask anymore, is that valid?
This is a special.
This is special.
We always take care of that one, uh, one time this month.
I'm sorry.
Pursuant to the provision of North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, print C's A, print C's C, and one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, print C's C, I move that Graham County Board of Education go into closed session to receive advice from Ms. Ellen Davis, attorney for Graham County Board of Education, which, um, advice comes within its review of the attorney-client period, which this advice will be generally legal advice about legal issues and legal matters. Pursuant to the provision of North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, print C's C, I move the Graham County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of considering personnel as a matter as defined in and allowed by the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, print C's A, print C's six, and the North Carolina General Statute one fifteen C dash three twenty-one.
Do I have a second? All in favor? We are now in closed session. Okay. Action items, Ms. Knight. Are you ready, Susie? Okay. Action items, Ms. Knight?
Yes, I recommend.
Please. Personally.
I recommend that you employ in position of custodian, Matt Brooks.
Do I have a motion to approve custodian Matt Brooks for the high school? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend that you employ as a twenty-first century summer custodian, Matt Upright.
Do I have a second?
Business for the board. That may be a meeting that we will cancel. Um, it will depend on whether or not we have any vacancies in the personnel that need to be addressed at the time. Um, I will certainly give notice in a way for that. And if that's in your next regular schedule, we'll really need a person, uh, person to do that. So if you'll hold July nineteenth and make a complaint for this, but, uh.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? All in favor?